Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. Today's meeting, as it always is, is being livestreamed and videotaped. The videos are available for viewing at wcboe.org. As we always do, we begin by the Pledge of the Flag, once again led by one of our students, Olivia McBride. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Olivia McBride. She's from Glen Avenue and did a great job. Can you give her a round of applause today? And we have a certificate for her and a flag, so thank you so much. And Olivia, did you have any guests with you today?
Yes, it's going to be my mom.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Great job.
Yeah, we're shocked.
Yes. 3.2, approval of today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Since our last meeting, we've lost five members of the education family of Wycomico County Board of Education. Joseph Phillips was a six years of service, was a coach at Mardella High School. Brenda White had 23 years of service, mostly at North Salisbury Elementary School, was a special education instructional assistant. Carolyn Bennett Collins, 26 years of service, administrative assistant, worked at Mardella Middle and High School. Donna Doherty, two years of service, Title 1 aid at Prince Street Elementary. And then Jaden Donaldson was an eighth grade student at Salisbury Middle School. So if we could all take a moment and acknowledge these folks. 3.4, student reps to the board report. Seated at the table today from Wycomico High School, Julia Matthews. Julia, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Stoffer, board members and guests. My name is Julia Matthews, and I'm honored to be WyHigh's student representative at this meeting, as I share WyHigh's most recent accomplishments. Since our last meeting, our teachers have been quite busy. Last Thursday, we held a watch party, watch party, for Maryland Teacher of the Year program in Wycomico High School cafeteria. Although Ms. Matthews did not win, she will continue to be the face of our county and what education is all about. Although to me, she's just my mom. Continuing with teacher achievements, Mr. Nate Stone has been nominated for the Maryland Lifetime Service to Wrestling Awards. I know our wrestling team is thankful for Mr. Stone and his dedication to the sport. Our faculty also held the first teacher and family tailgate before WyHigh versus Decatur game, thanks to Ms. Wallace. This event was well attended and enjoyed by everyone. Thanks to Mr. Craig Weaver and our administrators, we are now opening a school store. This store will enable easier access to school merchandise and allow students to show their tribe pride. During October, our school has celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month. Our multicultural ILT group will continue to create events and celebrate culture and heritage throughout the year in order to increase cultural competence. Last week's activities included Flag Day, Football Jersey Day, traditional dress day, and Make-up Piñata Day. The week culminated with Trivia Day, where the trivia contest during flex and the winners enjoying candy prizes. With college application deadline looming, many of our students, along with students from the other high schools, attended a college boot camp at Salisbury University. Students received help with essays, information about financial aid, and a tour of the campus. That included lunch in the dining hall. We are proud to say we had the most students attending, a total of 65 at this event. While our seniors are exploring the college world, they, along with other students, are putting their most into their sports. Girls soccer received their first win since 2013. It was a big win with a score of eight to three against Chrisfield. While our football team had a tough go for a couple of weeks, they rebounded on Friday, beating Cambridge South Dorchester 44 to 7. WyHigh's marching band went on their first competition this past weekend. They received amazing feedback that will help them perform better. They're looking forward to improving throughout the remainder of their marching season. As their homecoming is approaching, we have decided on the theme Black and White Ball and finalized our Spirit Week and pep rally. Our Spirit Week days include Adam Sandler versus Adam Sandler, dress in Adam Sandler's unique style or dress as one of his characters, Old School versus New School, dress in your favorite decade, comfy versus classy, dress in your comfiest clothes or your classiest clothes, and we will end the day with a blue versus gold. We are beyond excited for our first pep rally since 2019. Our pep rally will include lots of fun games like tug of war, musical chairs, donate eating contests, tiny bike relay race, and a football versus cheerleader dance-off. There will also be performances from the marching band, dance team, and cheer team. Our student body seems to get more excited as the closer we get to these much missed and much appreciated high school events. We are extremely proud of the accomplishments of both staff and students, and we are looking forward to all this year has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. From Mardella Middle and High School, Naya Matthews.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Stoffer. When I ran for president of the SGA Mardella at the end of last year, I ran with the sole intent to make change and to be inclusive. So far, I truly believe that I have done so. Our SGA currently holds over 40 members. This is a big difference in comparison to last year, we had five. This is also truly our first school year back with no restrictions due to the pandemic. This has allowed for many events to be held. This Friday, our SGA is very excited to be setting up and decorating for our Purple Rain themed homecoming this Saturday. Along with our homecoming festivities, we have implemented some new things. We have been holding themed soccer games rotating between the boys and the girls varsity soccer teams each week. We are also holding a themed homecoming game. On the 18th, the theme will be Light Up the Night. Spectators should come dressed in black and/or neon and glow wear. Our SGA will also be selling glow sticks. In order to boost spirit morale at the homecoming game, we'll be holding two different contests. There will be a spirit contest where anyone dressed in neon gear can be entered into a contest, where the person with the most spirit will win a $15 Chick-fil-A gift card. There will also be a sign raffle. If you bring a sign in support of a player or the team, you get a ticket. At the end of the night, we'll draw one ticket, and that person will also win a $15 Chick-fil-A gift card. We will be holding our homecoming Spirit Week the week of the homecoming game. Our days are also Dress Like Adam Sandler Day, Neon Day, Country versus Country Club Day, and Anything But a Backpack Day. The best dressed students during this week will also get a shout out on the morning announcements. For our next big event, we are hoping to bring back the bonfire. Though, as I mentioned the last meeting, our campus is thoroughly restricted due to our much-needed and so far successful renovations, we are currently working with admin to determine where/if we can hold this event. This week, our school is holding a bullying prevention Spirit Week. Yesterday was Dress Like a Superhero Day to stand up against bullying. Today was Odd Socks Day to celebrate our differences. Later this week, we have Unity Day, where we dress in orange, Team Jersey Day, and MMHS Unity Day. Finally, after our homecoming events, we'll be turning our focus to our next fundraiser. We will be holding a little royalty tea party, where kids will come dressed up, and our members will lead them in various activities such as character sing-along, makeovers, coloring activities, and crafts. We look forward to the outcome of this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Naya. Representing Parkside High School, Daphne Minn.
Good afternoon, board members and guests. Parkside has been having an extremely successful month, and we have many more successful events to come. This past weekend was our homecoming weekend. It was on October 8th of 2022, and our theme was United the Tiki, a tropical theme. In the week upcoming, we had a tropical-themed Spirit Week with many different diet days, including like a Tropical Tuesday, and on Friday, we had a Blink Pink Friday to celebrate cancer awareness. On Friday, we ended the week with a pep rally parade throughout the school with the football players, the band, and the cheerleaders to excite the school before the game, the big game day. On the homecoming game versus Ken Island, lots of students came out to support the team in the student section, and the band gave an excellent performance during halftime. We also crowned the homecoming court and announced the homecoming king and queen that night. The homecoming dance also ended great. We had a great turnout with over 600 students in attendance, and everybody had a great time dancing and trying out the giant inflatable mechanical surfboard we had for everybody. We've also had a great month in sports. Boys and girls soccer, field hockey, volleyball, football, golf, and cross country are working hard to wrap up their season strong, and volleyball had their first win against Stephen Decatur in eight years. Our arts programs have also been working really hard. Although our marching bands' competition last week in Crofton was canceled due to weather, they're working hard to prepare for their upcoming competition in Virginia Beach this Saturday and next week during Dharma Brigade. I hope you guys come out. And on October 27th, our orchestra is planning a children's concert for over 700 kids in our auditorium. And our auditions for the school play Cooking Can Be Murder has just finished, and the cast is also working hard for their performance in November. For upcoming spirit events, we have our Class of 2024 officers planning a Powder Puff Football Game of Flag Football this Friday, where the girls sign up and the football players are their coaches. And then the Class of 23 are also planning two upcoming fundraisers, a community yard sale, and a Parkside Bonfire. And upcoming, well not upcoming, we've had a lot of events this month and this week for any career preparation for our students. This week is Maryland College Application Campaign Week, so students will have the opportunity to get help with their college applications, meet with military recruiters, and Warwick representatives will be here to discuss credit and non-credit options with the school. Thursday, October 13th, is FAFSA Information Night, where students and their families will be able to learn more about the financial aid process and any additional information from onsite Warwick representatives. On September 28th, ACE mentors, Architecture, Construction, and Engineering, came to Parkside during lunch for a photo op, an info session for any students interested in careers involving architecture, construction, and/or engineering. The students really enjoyed the mini excavator and the small skid steer that the ACE representatives brought along, and the mayor of Salisbury also dropped by to check it out. On September 30th, several students from Parkside also attended the countywide college boot camp at Salisbury University for more information about the college application process and any skills they might need in preparation for the future. And other than that, it is MPSAA, sorry, that's long, Fall Officials Week, so the students will be giving a note of thanks to fall sports officials during various games this week. And our CTE, our Career and Technical Education, will be having a PAC Program Advisory Committee Dinner and meeting on October 26th. We have more water bottle stations installed throughout our school, and our PSATs will be commencing tomorrow on Wednesday while the rest of our students have ACE or GNS work. That's it for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Representing James M. Bennett High School, Kara Lewis.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Stoffer and fellow board members. First of all, I would like to thank you for coming to visit the SGA and speak at our month's meeting. We made an impact to personally meet you, hear from you, and know that our thoughts are being not only listened to but truly heard. We've had a busy month at J&amp;B, getting into the spring of the school year. Our homecoming dance was a huge success, selling out nearly every possible ticket. We had a homecoming Spirit Week followed by a classic pep rally in our gymnasium, featuring performances from the band, our cheerleading team, and our new step team, and it had multiple interactive games with our student body. Although our homecoming football games time had to be moved and took place in pretty miserable conditions because of the hurricane, the students still showed up to support each other. We've had a few class-specific events, such as a freshman assembly to raise drug awareness with Tony Hoffman. We have also had a senior assembly where our guidance counselors helped us learn about college applications, and we are close to our official college application week. We also hosted our first-ever senior sunrise, where the seniors sat on blankets at our football field, which we call the shipyard, and we watched the sunrise as a class over served breakfast. Sports-wise, both our boys and our girls soccer teams are undefeated, and many teams are now about three weeks away from playoffs. Students at J&amp;B are also truly taking initiative of the wide variety of flex options we offer, where they can pursue hobbies or interests, even odd ones such as e-gaming, that fosters connection between students and staff members. We are also in the middle of our Rock and Roll Revival Auditions, and that theme will be the Power of Love this year, so be ready for that later this winter. As far as academics at school goes, we're proud to say that we have the most students from the county signed up to take the PSATs tomorrow, and I wish everyone taking the exam the best of luck. Meanwhile, aside from planning fun school involvement events, such as possible movie showings, my fellow SGA board members and I have been in contact with the Maryland Association of Student Councils, where we're beginning to communicate with SGA students at a state level, hoping to bring the Eastern Shore into the picture. We're also planning to form a committee for equity as we move forward as an SGA here at Bennett. Hopefully, we can even collaborate with the other high school SGAs in coordinating with each other throughout the year for possible events. Thank you all, and it is a pleasure to be here and represent J&amp;B's students.
Thank you very much, Kara. So thank you to all four student representatives to the board, obviously to everyone you all prepare for this very well and very thorough. We get a great report. And today, the board members and many of the administration had the privilege of having lunch with the four of you, so we got to know you better, and hopefully you got to know us better. But thank you for your time today and always. Thank you very much. So 3.5, superintendent's report. Dr. Stoffer.
Thank you, Mr. Malone, Mr. Murray, and board members. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to start with a few highlights. Again, just to echo what Julia had said, the watch party last week for the Maryland Teacher of the Year event, which was a live event on Maryland Public Television, was outstanding, and it was just so nice to be able to see all of the community members that were there, former students, current students, of course, a lot of staff, all there to support Mrs. Matthews, who's Wycomico Teacher of the Year. And even though she wasn't chosen as the Maryland Teacher of the Year, she's still our Teacher of the Year, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and she represents us very well. Also, just to talk a little bit about what Kara said, I'm making my way around to all of the different Student Government Association and Representative meetings in the next couple of weeks, so I had a great time at Bennett, and I know I will enjoy my time at each of the other high schools as well. And then just lastly, just to talk briefly about a visit that I got to make yesterday, our Birth the Five program here in Wycomico County is a special program and one that probably not a lot of people realize all that goes into what that program is. We have a small department, but they work with almost 200 families and young people in our community, from the time, really, many of them from the time they're born all the way until the time they start kindergarten. They do a great job. I got to go on some home visits yesterday, and I just wanted to take a moment and thank them and really thank them for all the work they do. Many times, it goes unrecognized, as a number of things do in our county, but I just think that's one department that not many people really realize, even working in our own school system, the valuable work that they do and the liaisons that they are between the families, our community, and also our schools and our staff. So I wanted to thank them publicly. And with that, we are going to have a regular Maryland Blueprint update each month, starting with this month, and we'll begin with that with Dr. Briggs.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer. As I pull up that presentation, well, each day that I get to dive into the blueprint, I thank Dr. Stoffer for asking me to be the blueprint coordinator. So I would like to publicly-
You're very welcome, Dr.
-publicly thank you again here today. But as he alluded to, there's been a lot of talk about the blueprint for Maryland's future over the last two years, and as the timeline is moving forward, we do think it's important that we remind both the board and the community about the blueprint, where we are and where we're heading in some of the timelines. Today is going to be more of a general overview or a reminder for many, but I anticipate over the next several months, we'll be able to dive a little deeper into the blueprint and the requirements and then the impact on Wycomico County. So I wanted to start with reminding everybody of the five pillars or policy areas that are addressed in the blueprint. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I think it's important to recognize that although the policies are distinguished by pillars, the fundamental premise of the blueprint is that they are interrelated and must be implemented in tandem to achieve the intended outcomes and goals. And that'll come into play a little bit later when I talk about the timeline and what we're hearing from both MSDE and the AIB. So I'm going to dive in a little bit to each of those five pillars or policy areas, just so you can see what they entail or what the goals of those are. For early childhood education, in summary, it's basically to make sure that all students are ready to learn when they begin kindergarten. This is one area that I feel as though Wycomico County Public Schools is in the best position to handle. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Donna Hanlon and her focus during her time here. She made this a priority from day one, and that set us up to be in good position moving forward. Second policy area is high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders. If we don't have good teachers and leaders, our students are going to suffer, and so it's critically important that we have the best people working with our students each and every day. I do want to address a couple of the bullet points up there. 10% salary increase that's required by the law, we have already met that target. Thanks to Dr. Pavick and the negotiations team, we're fortunate to be able to have already met that target. $10,000 salary increase for MBCT, or Nationally Board Certified Teachers, we are doing that as well. The one that we are still working on is the $60,000 starting teacher salary by FY '26. And we do have time. Right now, a starting teacher in Wycomico County makes just under 52, so we have a little bit of work to do there, but we're heading in the right direction. The other thing I do want to acknowledge is a little further down there, new career ladder for teachers and administrators must be negotiated and implemented by July 1st, 2024. This is a very major task. It's going to be a challenge both for our district and other LEAs. Dr. Pavick will be working with our Unit 1, Joan and Moranis, to negotiate their- they're going to work together collaboratively to make that happen, so more to come on that. Third pillar or policy area is college and career readiness. We want all students to be college and career-ready by the end of 10th grade, and then we need to establish clear pathways following that. Currently, the CCR designation is based upon an English and a mathematics assessment. MSDE is currently beginning a research study to look at other ways to determine college and career readiness. I think the one that Superintendent Chowdery is most readily exploring is in regards to students' GPA, so more to come on that, but MSDE will be conducting that research study. The fourth pillar or policy area is more resources to ensure that all students are successful. We must provide more support for students in schools who need it the most. And they mentioned specifically additional supports for English language learners. We've talked in here about the unique needs that those students have, and we have an ever-growing population, which we have also talked about, so we definitely need to support them. Also, our students are coming from low-income homes, poverty situations, those also need support, and then, of course, we have our unique special education students in their population. We do have concentration of poverty grants that go directly to our schools that have the most pockets of low-income students, and so that is greatly appreciated. And then, this is not just an us thing. We are working with the various community supports to meet the needs of our students and our families. And then the last policy area is governance and accountability. The AIB, which is newly formed, basically is going to dictate what we do moving forward. They are the overarching governing body, and I'm going to talk more about them in just a second. And the one key slide here that I do want to point out is that we must develop a local implementation plan, which, again, I'll talk about one timeline in just a second, but without an approved blueprint implementation plan, we can lose or would have withheld 25% of the state revenue. And obviously, that would be detrimental, and we couldn't operate. So we need to make sure that we craft and implement a good, positive blueprint implementation plan that supports the needs of our students and our staff moving forward. Just wanted to talk a little bit about, and I'll try not to ramble too much here, the unique rub sometimes between the MSDE and the Accountability and Implementation Board. For years, obviously, we have our own local board here, which we report to and govern to our policies. However, and we also work with MSDE and receive their guidance, but as far as anything dealing with the blueprint, it is the Accountability and Implementation Board that will be, that they are tasked with and have the ability to ensure excellence for all through governance and accountability. So it's the AIB that is controlling and will dictate a lot about the blueprint moving forward. And so we are, many of us in this room have had the opportunity to sit in and watch many AIB meetings. We will continue to do that, to try to gain their thoughts and opinions to guide what we're doing, but then we'll ultimately make, hopefully, the right decisions for our staff and students. Little bit about timeline, which is critically important here. So if you look at the top, October 15th, the AIB will adopt a draft comprehensive plan for public comment. That is this Saturday. Already, the state superintendent, Superintendent Chowdery, has proposed a plan to the AIB. The plan consists of 153-page draft template. That is before we even put our meat in it. It's 153 pages. Preliminary feedback from the AIB that it was a little too intensive, a little too comprehensive, cumbersome, so they have kind of pushed back a little bit, so we're going to be curious as to the responsiveness that they, what they come back with after receiving his plan. The other thing that Superintendent Chowdery proposed in his initial plan was that some of the timelines be pushed back for some of the pillars. As I said earlier, the Kerwin Commission is intent is that all five pillars are implemented at the same time, because they are interrelated. So the AIB has made it clear that they are going to be focusing on all five pillars and not be pushing back all of the timelines in there. So we are anxiously awaiting their draft plan. We have various groups, both internally and across the state, Dr. Stoffer and the other state superintendents, or the other LEA superintendents, myself and the other blueprint coordinators, and then some of our stakeholder workgroup chairs, will be collaborating with others across the state to then draft good comments back to the AIB so that hopefully they can be responsive to that before, on December 1st, they will adopt their official comprehensive plan, and that'll give us our official marching orders as far as our development of our local comprehensive plan, which is due on March 15th, which is a little bit scary, and so there's a lot of work to do in a short period of time. Speaking of that short period of time, we have already established, and we have in working order, our Blueprint Steering Committee. We meet each month. I anticipate that those meetings may increase. In addition to the steering committee, we have five blueprint workgroups to represent the five pillars and CTE. We have a variety of stakeholders, including our higher ed representatives, our teachers' association, parents, and students on those workgroups, and they will continue to meet to draft respective parts of our implementation plan. And those are some of the things I'll be able to update you in future meetings. I mentioned that March 15th, if we backtrack just a little bit, March 15th seemed close, but if we're going to submit on March 15th, we really need to have board approval by February 14th, and we value community and public feedback as well, so we really need to have a draft plan for public feedback by the middle of January. And as I said, December 1st is when the official plan comes forward, so we have a short window there, so lots of work to do. For those at home and in the building, want to point out two things, and this presentation will be posted after the fact, but two links on the right for the AIB. The AIB does have an active and beneficial website with lots of good information for those who want to dig a little deeper. And then there's also a state feedback form, which is already live, so anybody can provide feedback on that. I think that's it for blueprint this month.
So, no, thank you, Dr. Briggs. I would also say that a lot of the community engagement phase of the superintendent entry plan, going around talking to a number of organizations, also talking with students, we're going to be having parent forums, a lot of the feedback that is going to be generated from those meetings and those discussions can help drive what we, not necessarily what goes in the plan, as much as how we're going to accomplish the plan and how we're going to do the work. So just putting that plug out there. So just putting that plug out there. I also know that I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Briggs. He's gonna take us through some highlights from some of the summer programs that we had this past summer.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffler. Let Tracy roll. You're good, Tracy? All right. So blueprints looking forward, summer program in 2022 is taking a look backwards. Kudos to Dr. Stoffler. For those of you who have seen his kind of introductory presentation, he throws a lot of numbers out there, which is a good thing. I liked it, and so I'm kind of stealing it a little bit, but instead of making you guess, I'm gonna tell you exactly what those numbers represent from summer 2022. So we have 49 school buses and three vans transporting students from across the district to 25 different internal and external programs. Desmond was keeping our buses rolling. 58 students received extended school year services, what we refer to as ESY, meeting their unique needs. 40 students attended Camp Pinehurst at West Salisbury Elementary School. Prime Elementary focused on 3rd through 5th grade students when reading, reading remediation and enrichment. We had 38 students take part in that. Our middle school prime reading program had 29 students take part. 230 students attended middle school for some, middle school, summer school, and that was housed this summer at our Choices Building, and that went very well. Middle school enrichment program had an additional 15 students. Those were in our TAD program. Our food service, kudos to Mr. Gosley and his team for serving over 50,000 meals this summer to our students and their families who needed it most. Elementary Summer Academy and Summer Leap had almost 400 students take part, and 225 of those stayed for the afternoon as well. High School Summer School, which is always our, one of our most frequently attended, had 246 total participants, 39 took original credit classes with 207 remediation courses. Judy Center for our youngest learners, 34 pre-K and K students at Beaver Run with an additional 27 at Pemberton. 18 10th and 11th grade students participated in paid summer youth employment program funded by the Division of Rehabilitation Services. Prince Street, 100 students took part in their summer cruising and summer leap program. Slam at Salisbury Middle School, getting ready for middle school, was 58 students. And finally, Middle School Summer STEM Camp averaged 30 kids per week for three weeks. And a lot of kudos to go out there from Laura Bounds and Courtney Elliott and Levon Harmon for running the larger programs, but many are all around the district pulled together to help our students extend that learning throughout the summer and then hit the ground running in the fall, which they are currently doing. So, thank you, Dr. Stoffler.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Just wanted to get that information, and we thought it was important to make sure that that was out to our community and also to our staff to show the number of things, obviously, we have going on during this school year, but there's so many things that are going on during the summer as well. I also asked to get some more data and some information. I've asked Mrs. Miles to give us an update on where we stand currently with enrollment. Yes?
On your school buses, does 49 represent school buses that the county owns or?
That's a combination.
It's a combination.
Contractors man.
Thank you.
Well, I have some, hello, Dr. Stoffler, our board chair and all board members or vice chair, all guests. Good to have you here. Thank you, Dr. Havick. Usually, I'm very loud, and people want me quieter, but I'm going to do this. So I have some numbers for you. I don't have as many numbers, nor do I have as many slides as Dr. Briggs did, but the numbers I'm going to show you are the numbers that show all of those students that he was just talking about in our summer programs, as well as all of the students for which we continue daily in those five pillar policy areas and all that happens. So you'll notice that this enrollment update has a date on it. This has been polled as of today, but it could change tomorrow because I report enrollment each week, so it's an ever-changing number, but I will tell you, the change is always on an increase. So just sharing that with you. Total student enrollment in Wycomico County Public Schools, this is Y3 all the way through 12th grade, 15,013 students receiving services, transportation, meals, support, enrichment, remediation, 15,013 students. Our community has so much to be excited about and proud of in our schools, serving the youngest in our community. Total ELL students, we heard in pillar four, that emphasis area of our ELL or our English Language Learner students. Currently, 1,546 students representing double-digit total languages. Ms. Harland was getting that for me. Our three highest population languages currently, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Portuguese, though the number is ever-expanding. These students are being served in all 26 locations, including schools and programs, from our youngest in pre-kindergarten through our 12th grade. Our high school students receive some of the direct services at our Newcomer Center, located in the Shoemaker Complex at the front of Parkside, but all of our schools are supporting, in total, 1,546 students, in helping them to be successful in all that is happening around them daily. Going back again to pillar four, our special education students. We have currently, as of last evening, 1,522 students receiving within the full range of special education services across, again, 26 locations. I was a middle school English teacher, so I'm not going to give you the exact percentage. I don't want to embarrass myself in front of anyone, but you can round off here a little bit and say, 10% of our students, just over 10% of our students, receive ELL services. And again, just over 10% of our students receive special education services. These services are in addition, above and beyond all that these same students are receiving as part of the 15,013 in our schools every day, from all of those areas that I mentioned before. And it is truly an honor to serve and to lead in Wycomico County Public Schools, knowing that everything is being done every day to meet the needs of, as of October 11th, 15,013 That would be the end.
Were any of those students who are ELL, maybe also the specific way students?
There is some crossover, yes, sir. So they may be receiving multiple supports and services to meet their needs. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
So I know that, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer.
What is the percentage of each, I mean, of the ELL students increased, say, from last year and prior year?
I will tell you, there's an increase. I don't have that exact number, Mr. Palmer, but I can get that for the board, and I'd be glad to share that. Mrs. Harland is amazing in the data management that she has, and I'm sure she'd be able to share that with us. I do know in our conversation recently, there is a marked increase with the number of students coming in qualifying for ELL services, so I can share that with you moving forward.
I can add that when I first created the presentation that I've been showing to the community with the number of ELL students, those numbers were taken from last year, and it was around 1350. And then, I updated it for some recent presentations that took it more from this summer, and that was around 1450, somewhere in that area. So that gives you an idea of the increases that we're seeing, and now we're at a little over 1,500.
I do know that the last three days of last week, we had 24 students join us who qualified for ELL services. So that was in a 72-hour period, and we welcomed 24 more students into Wycomico County Public Schools on a path of success.
Have you determined the crossing point where school capacity and increase in ELL come together?
I have not looked at it as an intersection. I look at any challenge as an opportunity. So we will seek every one of those as an opportunity to continue to meet the needs of the students and move them forward. But if we need a new building, I won't be afraid to ask either.
So during the pandemic, we know we lost students, so this number appears that, in total, we might not have gained those specific students back, but we've passed where we were pre-pandemic?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have, sir.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
I'm your setup person.
Any other questions before we move on to Mr. Butler? Extra Mile Award winners.
Okay, good afternoon, and we are going to start, and I don't think he is here because he may be out driving, but our first extra mile winner for the 2022-2023 school year is Dory Bradford. Mr. Bradford here? Probably not. He's probably out driving his bus. He's a bus driver for 557. He's one of our specialized transportation bus drivers, and what's amazing about him is he is incredibly patient and understanding of our students' needs on a daily basis. There is a student that recently transferred to his bus that has a fear of riding in motor vehicles. Well, Mr. Bradford takes the student sometimes 15, 10 to 15 minutes to board the bus. He has been working with the student, gaining their rapport with the student, as well as met with the student off the bus and walked with her to get her comfortable with the transition onto the school bus. When speaking of this bus driver, to other staff, they also have memories of him going above and beyond for many of our students. We're so appreciative of his care, patience, and dedication that would, many would not show for our students. But for those reasons, Dory Bradford, driver of bus 557, is an extra mile award winner for the month of September. So even though he's not here, let's give him a round of applause. All right, our next one is here, because I saw him. Mr. Simpkins, come on down. James Simpkins, by the way, is a building service manager at Bennett Middle School, and we also have his principal, we also have his principal here as well, Mrs. Erin Nathan. So let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Simpkins. He is someone who's not only gone the extra mile this past month, but constantly does it month after month at Bennett Middle School. He is someone who can be counted on to help out in any situation and is always just a phone call away. He's consistently monitoring the facilities at Bennett Middle, checking in with every teacher to make sure that they have what they need to be successful in their classrooms. Now, when Mr. Simpkins is emailed or called to help out with facility issues, he responds right away. He does that. And if you have questions about an issue, he has the answer, right? Mr. Simpkins deserves this award for always going the extra mile for his staff members without being asked, and for his commitment to his job is at a level that we should all strive to attain, and because of that, he is an extra mile award winner. Let's give him a round of applause. And Mr. Simpkins, we have this for you. Tracy's gonna get your picture. If you want Mr. and Ms. Nathan to, to hold one, there you go. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Simpkins. Thanks for taking care of Bennett Middle School for us. Our next award winner is here as well. Mrs. Wallace, will you come on down? From Wycomico High School, she's a business ed teacher. So Mrs. Wallace is super passionate about Wycomico High School, its staff, and of course, the students. She brings positivity to the school every single day. I'm over there quite a bit, so I see it. Not only is she amazing in teaching her classes, but she really, really does care for her students. Now, Mrs. Wallace does her best to make them feel loved, lift their spirits, and is one of the biggest cheerleaders for our athletic teams. In her evenings, she helps to run the Waihi Blue Crew Fan Section at every basketball and football game. She even pushed for a spirit committee at the school to increase staff morale, and believe it or not, it worked, and everyone loves it. She's an amazing person who bleeds blue and gold, and recently organized a tailgate at one of the Waihi football games. We need more teachers, folks, like Gretchen Wallace, and because of that, she is definitely deserving of the extra mile award for the month of September. So Gretchen, let me hand a few things to you. Somebody that does really bleed blue and gold is Mrs. Wallace. Yes. Thank you very much, Gretchen. Appreciate it.
Okay, and since Dr. Briggs is gonna be taking over the monthly duties with the Maryland Blueprint updates, we have switched roles, and now Dr. Briggs is gonna, or Dr. Regger is gonna be doing the grants report.
Good afternoon, Chairman Murray, our Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Murray, members of the board, member of the public who are here or watching online. I'm pleased to share updates this afternoon regarding our ongoing efforts to support our financial position through writing and acquiring grants. In September, we received two grants totaling $220,180. The first grant, about $174,000, was the School Resource Officer Grant from MSDE that will provide funding to support our efforts to promote safe schools, including contracted services for our SROs to cover after-school events and safety equipment and training for our SROs. Received a second grant of about $46,000 from MSDE for the Additional Literacy Funding Initiative. This grant will support our implementation of strategies aligned to the science of reading that was begun with the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy, or CIRCL, grant that you've heard about in previous grant reports. We submitted five new grants in September totaling over $280,000, and I look forward to updating you on the progress of these applications at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regger. Mr. Malone, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffler and team. Excellent report. Thank you very much, everyone. 4.1, approval of open session minutes, which are comprised of the last regular meeting, September 13th, and October 4th work session. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
I will be abstaining if I was not at the work session nor at the September meeting.
And Mrs. Duelling can note that. Thank you. So they're approved with one abstention. Consent items, 5.1 through 5.3. So upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, 6.1. Our audit firm, UHI LLP Certified Public Accountants, has completed the audit of the Board of Education for the period ended June 30th, 2022. The following documents were provided to you in advance for your review: comprehensive annual financial report for the Board of Education, Wycomico County, for fiscal year ended June 30, 2022; audit communications, June 30, 2022; and report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. The Audit Committee reviewed the CAFRA with the auditors on October 3rd, 2022. Upon the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion the Board accept the audit reports as submitted for fiscal year ended June 30, 2022?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Controller, Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon. I didn't want to interrupt earlier, but we had a 16% increase in ELL students over last year and a 16% increase the year before, so it's been consistently 16%, ironically.
I'm certain the controller did that right in his head. No calculator, nothing. Didn't take your shoes and socks off to count the 20, just did it right here, right?
I was ready in case you want, you asked. I thought somebody might ask.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Murray, Dr. Stoffler, board members. Pleased to report that we received an unmodified opinion from our auditors, which is the best you can do. It used to be referred to as a clean opinion. The audit report on internal control reported no deficiencies in internal controls, and there were no significant findings or issues according to the audit communications letter. So we received the best report that you can receive, and I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
I would just say that Mr. Murray, Mr. Fitzgerald, and I are part of the Audit Committee, and we're extremely proud, as is sure the rest of my colleagues of the job that we do financially. I mean, it's, to have a clean audit every single year, everything was perfect. I mean, there was-- I mean, there was nothing in there. So, but if there are any questions, please ask, but it's unbelievable what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Wonderful job, Jesse, too, and your team, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions, I assume you're ready to vote? Oh, you have a question, Mrs. Zabowski?
Just a comment, one thing I like about Jesse's report, he always explains them very clearly, so those of us whose field is not finance will understand.
Thank you.
Very good, very good comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Mr. Reed. 6.2, per the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve the final educational specifications for the replacement Fruitland Primary project as reviewed and discussed at the October 4th, 2022 work session, and to authorize submission of the document to the state for approval? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And there's a second. Ms. Campbell, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Stoffer, Chair Malone, and Vice Chair Murray and Board. As reviewed in detail at the work session on October 4th, this document describes the educational programs, activities, requirements, and performance expectations for a replacement Fruitland Primary School. As part of an abbreviated educational specification process, the Beaver Run Elementary School program was refined and adjusted with input from school administration and instructional supervisors to best meet the needs of the Fruitland community. If approved by the Board today, the educational specifications will be submitted to the Maryland State Department of Education in support of the FY 2024 Capital Improvement Plan Local Planning Request. I stand for questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Palmer?
Just for my own personal curiosity, on Beaver Run, when will the report on recyclables be ready for the entire project? I don't think they're really, they're still doing a little bit out there, so I don't know if that's going to be included or not.
Mrs. Ashby's moving toward the mic.
You're referring to the construction recycling? Yeah, it's not ready yet, but you can report to me once it's, they have to finish out the rest of the paving and sidewalk, so maybe by the end of the calendar year, maybe first of the, first quarter.
For people don't understand what that is, when they tear down these buildings, all the glass, all the steel pipes, all the copper pipes, bricks, everything is recycled, and we're given a, kind of like a grade on it, and really that helps towards our, a green energy footprint for recycling. At one time, they didn't do that, but now we do do it, and they're very good at, at their job.
Any questions for Mrs. Campbell?
I think we really asked most of our questions at the work session.
That's a fair point. For the viewing public, we reviewed this in a fairly lengthy work session, the different options, and came up with what's proposed here today for Fruitland. So, no other questions? I assume you're ready to vote?
The presentation was, was very detailed and really explained everything based on the table of contents, what everyone is looking for and the questions that everyone asked. So wonderful job on the team for that. Thank you.
Outstanding. Any other questions or comments? Okay, assume you're ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It's carried. 6.3, per the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept the attached proposal from the Firm of Keller Construction Management for construction management at Risk Design Build Services for design and construction for the Parkside Cafeteria Patio Canopy Project, and authorize issuance of a design-build contract? The final contract shall be in a form acceptable to the superintendent and Board's legal counsel, and include all contract documents, general conditions, and supplementary conditions of the contract, as well as the final agreed-upon negotiated terms of the contract. Request is also made to authorize issuance of a notice to proceed to the, the construction management firm. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashby?
Good afternoon, Dr. Stoffer, Chair Malone, Vice Chair Murray, and Board members. Senior leadership is in support of a canopy for the patio outside of Parkside's cafeteria. Keller Construction Management was selected from the Board's pre-qualified construction manager at Risk Vendors for a variety of reasons to provide a turnkey solution. In order to meet the obligation timeline of capital outlay funding, this project is proceeding as design-build. This approach provides both the design and construction through a single contract, saving time in the design process in conjunction with the construction manager's expertise in construction budgeting and phasing. The proposal in front of you includes a not-to-exceed budget of $270,000, which includes the canopy structure, lighting, foundations, removal, and reinstallation of patio tables. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
Just one question, um, I don't know what materials that are needed for this, but are, are there problems securing them?
Problems securing?
The materials that you're gonna need?
Like supply chain issues, right?
Um, we are cautiously optimistic that we will be able to complete this as a summer 2023 project. There's two options we're looking at, so the, the response will be potentially if it goes with a more traditional steel structure versus a tensile structure, so I'll have a better answer for that. But the price covers either one.
Okay, now this price here is, is set, or it has the ability to fluctuate, or is this a, this a set price?
If it fluctuates, it's under, not over.
Under, never over.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Palmer?
Mrs. Ashby, I kind of got an interest in patio covers. Not exactly at Parkside, but numerous times I've requested some type of a patio cover or covering over choices between two buildings, where the students have to go between one building outside and into the other over aluminum decking, and it gets wet, full of snow. I've been over there, it's an easy trip hazard, and many times I get told why we can't do it, and perhaps this company that you have contracted here could maybe go over to that spot and just take a look and tell us, is there anything he could do about that?
Um, I don't think it has to do with the company itself, it's a code situation.
Well, okay, that's, codes are codes, you know?
Codes are codes.
But it's a patio, it's a cover, it's a cover, and it is a slip hazard when you walk in between those buildings, and you get soaked at times walking between, because the lunchroom's over one area, classroom's over the other, so just help me out.
That's a good point, Mr. Palmer. I believe you and I took that same trip over there the exact day.
Yeah.
And it was pouring rain, and we, we did make that journey from one building to the other to have a meal with them, if I'm not mistaken. So, okay, just put a little bug in your ear for that, Dr. Stoffer.
No, I, I do appreciate the feedback. You know that we do have our capital improvement process with prioritizing the impact that all of our capital improvements have on the student body as a whole, as well as the schools, one of the 26 that we, we have in each of our, in our school system. So I appreciate the feedback, and we'll continue with our process and take in the input that we have, both from board members as well as our community. So thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 6.4, per the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept the attached proposal from the Firm of Oak Contracting, Inc., for construction management at Risk Design Build Services for design and construction for the Wycomico Middle Bus Canopy Project, and authorize issuance of a design-build contract? The final contract shall be in a form acceptable to the superintendent and Board's legal counsel, and include all contract documents, general conditions, and supplementary conditions of the contract, as well as the final agreed-upon negotiated terms of the contract. Request is also made to authorize issuance of a notice to proceed to the construction management Risk Design Build Firm. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Ashby?
Good afternoon, again. Senior leadership is in support of a bus canopy for Wycomico Middle School. Oak Contracting was selected from the Board's pre-qualified construction manager at Risk Vendors for a variety of reasons to provide a turnkey solution. In order to meet the obligation timeline of capital outlay funding, this project is proceeding as design-build. This approach provides both design and construction through a single contract, saving time in the design process in conjunction with the construction manager's expertise in construction budgeting and phasing. The proposal in front of you includes a not-to-exceed budget of $584,929, which includes base bid, alternates 1 and 2, representing over 3,200 square feet of canopy structure, associated lighting, foundations, sidewalk replacement, new accessible ramp, and removal and replacement of existing steps and landing as necessary outside of the gymnasium. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
Yes, will this be attached to the building or detached?
Um, it's, it's detached, they'll, they'll nest them under the overhangs of the existing building.
To the gymnasium, not to the main building?
It will go from the gymnasium to the door that is in the breezeway, thank you.
Will there be one, or, I know there's gonna be one, but is there going to be any more, maybe one at each end, a ramp? Handicap accessible ramp?
It's already at grade at the other, at the other end, and it, it, there is a ramp on the inside into that gymnasium lobby, but there's not from grade to inside the gymnasium on the exterior.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. 6.5, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 23 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Souza, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Good afternoon, Chairman Murray, Vice, I mean, excuse me, Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Murray, and of course, Dr. Stoffer. I'm here based on a requirement, an annual requirement of COMAR, that each LEA has to submit a comprehensive maintenance plan, or, for those that love acronyms, CMP, as it's affectionately known. And we have to do that by October 15th of each year. The CMP is something that's compatible with our local master plan, our CIP, and basically the operation of facilities and maintenance throughout all of our facilities. The purpose of it is to communicate to all our stakeholders, yourselves, students, teachers, staff, the general public, and the state, how we operate and how we evaluate ourselves. So, this is also a collaborative effort, not just Bob Souza's report, this is a collaborative effort of pretty much all of my staff, planning and construction, with a lot of the support documents that I get from Kayla on it. And it's here, we, I think, I believe we sent out a copy to each and every one of you via email for your review, and we're here today to seek your approval. I stand for any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Souza?
Bob, do you have any extra money in that, in that account?
I have a few bucks.
I mean, they have any, you know?
You, you say extra money.
I mean, like 5% contingency somewhere or something, or?
Well, we always, we always have a lot of projects in our pocket, that if one falls through, and we can't do it, or it gets held up for some reason, yes, we always have money here to, to reallocate it to something quickly, but do I operate with like a 5%, 10% like they normally do in the construction industry? No, I don't, my budget doesn't reflect a contingency at all. But I, you know, depending on what it is, we'll, and the desire, we'll always work around it and figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, and you do, do an excellent job on, a lot of people, I want to be aware that Mr. Souza and his team have made Wycomico counting number one in the state in our maintenance efforts. That is, I'm telling you, really hard to get, and it takes a lot of dedication to get there, and he's done it, so I gotta applaud him on that.
Well, this, thank you. As you all know, it's a collaborative effort, but this year's going to be difficult. This year, we have three of our oldest schools, WyMiddle, West, East Salisbury, and Fruitland Primary. But if we can maintain number one with that, that's, I'll be extremely happy. But they're, they're difficult schools, but they're in good shape. They're in very good shape, schools.
And just to explain briefly to the public, each year, the Interagency Commission, or the IAC, on school construction for the state of Maryland, does a complete and thorough audit and inspection of at least three of our schools, and from there, they have dozens and dozens of rankings from everything that you can inspect and assess, and they, they then give a score to each LEA for those assessments that they do, and this year, we're extremely proud that Wycomico rated the highest in the state for the state inspections of the maintenance of our schools.
Last year, we were number four, this year, we're number one, and when you're on top, it's a lot of work to stay there, and we're, we're doing it. So hopefully, we'll be there again next year.
You obviously have a great team, and you're a good leader, because 2.2 million gross square feet on 600 acres that you're responsible for overseeing, that's what I got out of this thing, that's a lot of square footage. So kudos to you and your team.
It's a lot of the same stuff.
Mr. Souza?
Yes, ma'am.
You know only too well that the first thing I look for when I go into the building is if the handicap doors work.
Mm-hmm.
And if they don't work, he knows I will call him or see him at the next board meeting, and those handicap doors are always fixed the next time I go to the school, and thank you so much.
You're more than welcome.
For those of you who cannot see this CMP, just like with many of our other informational presentations, it is extremely detailed, it's broken down, there are explanations, acronyms are explained, because of course, we, we cannot remember all of them when there's, you know, hundreds of them thrown at us every month. So will this be available for the public?
Well, once it's approved, it'll go on the website.
Once it's approved, it is available.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I think people should look at the presentations that we are talking about, because they are extremely detailed, and they answer a lot of questions that I'm sure the community has.
If you're wondering what the picture is on the cover, why I put a floor machine, that's, that's one of our new autonomous ones. We have, I think, 18 of them in the school, and we have more than any other school department in the country right now.
I went to Pittsville to pick my daughter up from school, and it was going down the hallway, and the students are fascinated by them. It, it was very, very cool to see in action, and it just, it's, I mean, as soon as it comes up to something, it spins around, it goes wherever it needs to go, it's hitting these, you know, angles and corners, so they were definitely an amazing purchase for the schools, and I am sure that the custodial staff is appreciative.
They don't call out sick, and they don't have vacation days or anything else, so.
Well, one of the, one of the issues, as many know, from COVID was just staffing and filling vacant positions. We, just like every other organization in the country, struggled with that and still do, and this is a, this is an attempt, when we can't fill a vacant position, that goes unfilled, then we have the same responsibility to keep schools clean each and every day for our students, so this was an opportunity for us to, to attempt to do that. So I do applaud Mr. Souza and his entire team, planning and construction, they work very closely together for their ingenuity in solving problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Souza? If not, assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
6.6, Personnel Matters is for information. 7.1, it's the public comment portion of our agenda. Public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and Board to listen to individuals' own comments on topics concerning Wycomico County public schools. The Board Chairman has the right to limit public comments in length or those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals, appeals or legal matters that are before the Board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. Only verbal comments are permitted during public comment session of a board meeting. Written, printed, audio, or video material may be submitted via comments@wcboe.org. No signs or posts. No signs or posters may be displayed by the public during board meetings. Each speaker shall address all comments directly to the board and speak only from the designated location for public comments. And the time limit, as you know, is three minutes. Today, we have six individuals who have signed up to speak. And the very first one is Bev Urick, Wycomico Retired School Personnel Association. Show appreciation and share plans with WCPS. Mrs. Urick, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I bring greetings from Wycomico Retired School Personnel Association. First, on behalf of the organization, I would like to congratulate Dr. Reger on his appointment as the Chief Finance and Operations Office. And we wish you the best of luck in your new position. We also want to congratulate Rebecca Matthews, which understands your mom, so pass it on to her. Our congratulations for being finalist as the Maryland Teacher of the Year. That's quite an honor. So congratulations. We have been busy this year making plans. I met with Dr. Stoffer to discuss ways that our organization can stay connected with Wycomico County schools. For one, we will be distributing, once again, our poster to all the schools and the buildings. And this year, we want to begin supporting our, honoring our support personnel. And our state organization, Maryland Retired School Personnel Association, is once again awarding mini grants to teachers to help fund one of their projects. And if you recall, in the past, Lisa McKinnon and Stephanie Rush have been awarded these mini grants. So I've got my fingers crossed that we'll have another one awarded this year. Dr. Stoffer has informed me that the information and applications have been distributed through the schools. So hopefully, come January, we'll hear some news. Finally, I want to take this opportunity to thank Joanne Tubbs, who has been very instrumental in, for many years, in further introducing Wycomico County staff to our organization through her post-retirement appointment. And I also want to thank in advance Andrea Dueling, who will be very helpful for me this year in getting our information distributed. And of course, I want to thank you for the time and interest that you and your staff takes in the staff, the teachers, and the students of Wycomico County. So here's to another rewarding and successful year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker to address the board, Bill Laird. Topic is to thank Mrs. Laird Lewis for her work on the board. Welcome.
All right, here we go. I'll have a cry. But I am a proud father of Tony Laird Lewis up there. And to proud grandfather Gary Lewis. A lot of you know what she and that family's been through in the last six months. And I begged her to fight and tell people things. Tony just said, no, Dad. I know a direction I'm going in. She fought in that election. She lost. Then she told me why. Who better can help a Wycomico County student than a parent of a kid that got in trouble over something stupid? I'm here to take care of the Wycomico County students, she said. And I'm so proud of her, and I love her. Thank you. We'll fight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Mary Ashante. Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. George Demko. Thank the current board members for their service.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be brief. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to all the board members for their service to the students of Wycomico County. I know it's been a difficult term, these past four years, the pandemic, political issues, social issues, cultural issues. So I appreciate your work and your dedication to the students and their families. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joe Venosa. Topic is politics.
Policies. Same thing, right?
No, I was concerned when he said politics. Policies, okay.
I gotta be honest. I'm still shocked about the two references to Adam Sandler. I mean...
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first, if I may, I'd just like to give a shout out to the staff and faculty at Pinehurst Elementary School. As the parent of a special needs child with, of course, an ever-growing population, this is, of course, a group of students that certainly need more help and support than ever. And it's very gratifying to know the work that these wonderful people do. My son went from being actually terrified, having a panic attack, to going into his gymnasium, to now being able to go into that gym fully and play. And it was because of the work that all these wonderful teachers did. It's incredibly heartwarming. And I hope that as board members, regardless of where you sit on the spectrum or the ideas, that you understand that you represent all of the students and that we all have our biases and our issues and our challenges. But we all should remember that we're here for the kids. That's also why I'm here, because I'm very concerned about, as you may know, the recent news that has come out about certain school board candidates and their ties to certain, what you would call far-right extremists, white supremacist groups, including a group allied with Mr. David Whitney. He, of course, is a former chaplain of the League of the South. This is a group that openly advocates not only for the morality of slavery, the righteousness of the Confederate cause, and increased white supremacy, but it's an organization that has also condoned physical violence in the past against teachers and staff of certain groups. I am disgusted that this has to even be brought up in 2022. We should not have these kinds of ideas and politics in our schools. And in these board elections, those that run should represent all of the people, not just selected groups. And it's on the responsibility of not only board members, but people in the community, teachers, you, the students. You need to understand that the people who represent you on that board represent all of you. And if they condone this kind of disgusting, un-American garbage, and proudly stand and take photos of it, then our school board is in real trouble. We have some major issues in this community, to be sure. We have financial issues. We have the increased challenges that a diverse population bring. We have all these things. But we need to have adults on the board who represent everybody. I say that as a Republican. Doesn't matter. The people who represent this board represent the community, not just a little slice of it. You don't get to choose who you advocate for in that job.
30 seconds.
Thank you. So as this election season comes out, please be aware that certain groups, the Delmar Parent Teacher Coalition, which has very few parents and teachers in it, from what I can tell, the League of the South and other extremist groups should not engage in a takeover of our schools because they are our schools, everybody here. All of our lives have value and meaning, regardless of our skin color, our politics, our orientation. So please, when you cast those ballots, make sure you cast them for those that represent all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ms. Sandra Spedden. Topic was general education.
Thank you. And I want to thank the board, too, for the work, the good work that they've done. I have always agreed with some of your votes on certain things. But I just was going to give a little bit of history background of public education in America. And when it started, it was started back in the 17, earlier 1700s, actually, by parents who wanted their children to be able to read the Bible. So they got together, they purchased, they got a teacher and paid her with produce usually, or work that they could do for her or him. And the purpose was to teach the children how to read the Bible. The colleges in this country were started by Christians who wanted to have preachers preach from the pulpit and be educated, like those in England. So many times, there have been challenges to it, to our educational system. And I have seen, in the years that I have lived, how things have changed so fast. I am nearly 80, and I have been going to school since the late 1940s. And it was quite a different system then. When you went into this classroom then, and we had individual classrooms, we didn't have a one-house classroom, one-house school. But we always had the pledge of allegiance to the flag. We had the Lord's Prayer. We had scripture reading because our parents knew that God was the one who had started this country and was blessing it. And as long as we blessed Him, we were blessed. But when we stopped and kicked Him out of the public school system, He took His hand off. And things have gone from bad to worse in my children's day and now my grandchildren's day. My son did not get a very good education in the public school system because he had a learning problem called auditory memory. We went to the high school and asked that he be allowed to have a tape recorder in the classroom, which we were told he needed in order to be able to learn. So he could tape what the teacher said and play it back at home when he got home. Not only would the principal not allow it, but neither would the superintendent, their assistant superintendent.
30 seconds.
And their so-called reasoning was that the teacher might say something she wouldn't want on the tape. So therefore, they weren't going to allow it. And I had taken with me somebody from Special Education, and she said, well, then maybe the teacher shouldn't be saying that on the tape. And I've seen things, since my son's time, get even worse. So I'm hoping that we'll have better days ahead in the educational system. I'm hoping that you all will start listening to the parents more than they used to. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we thank the members of the public who took the time to come to the meeting today and address the board and the superintendent. We always appreciate that. Thank you very much. Now, 8.1, board members' reports. I'll start to my far left this time with Ms. Suthowski.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I went over to Y High last week to attend the Teacher of the Year Watch Party for Rebecca Matthews. But I also want to thank Dr. Blake, who is the Y High principal, who is new this year to the school. And she just made everyone feel so welcome. And it was just a lovely evening. This past Saturday, I went over to the Prince Street Curriculum Carnival. Mr. Jason Miller is principal of Prince Street. He told me he had 1,200 students and parents sign up for the curriculum carnival. And at the carnival, the students have so many learning stations that they have to go through. And when they go through all of the learning stations, they get a certificate, and then they put this in the box, it's a coupon, and for a drawing. And Mr. Miller had been able to get six bicycles donated. And it was interesting, he told me he had one donation from a business for $1,000. And he had other large donations from businesses. And I was wondering if we could put these businesses on our website so people will know that such-and-such business did donate $1,000 and other businesses $1,200 in order to put this carnival on. I had an individual meeting, as did all the other board members, with Dr. Stoffer, and it was a very interesting, I thought, conversation. Today, we had lunch with four lovely ladies who represent their student governments. And I've got written down here, "Go Girl Power." I really like that. And Daphne, I enjoyed talking to you. She is a member of the tennis team at Parkside, which my son coaches. And it was quite an interesting conversation. One thing, Mr. Malone, I want to bring out. This morning, I went through my calendar. And I thought, just how many meetings and various activities, work sessions, luncheons, school visits, graduations, dinners, receptions, open houses, et cetera, et cetera, that board members attend during the year? And I looked at meetings during the day, 8:30 to 5:00. I had 66 on the calendar. I looked at night meetings. There were 47. This doesn't include all the reading. Dr. Carolyn Elmore is the one that clued me in on all the reading. I would have never realized how much reading we do as board members. I would say it's a minimum of 20 minutes, more like 30 minutes every day. This goes into two and a half hours a week or 10 hours a month. And you also have, some of these little innocent emails, people have two, three, four, five attachments which go on from frame to frame to frame. And then also, we have all the reading that you do for the committee meetings. So people who, when you go to look at school board members, do school board members have the time to 10 66-day meetings, 47 or more night meetings, and two and a half hours a month to donate to reading? I'm through.
Thank you, Ms. Suthowski. Mr. Brown?
I know all the things that we do at the board meetings is important, but the thing I enjoy most but the thing I enjoy most is hearing from the student representatives. You know, to hear what's going on at each one of the schools is really fantastic and pleasing to the ear. It just shows the caliber of the individuals that who are selected to represent their schools is really high and you are to be commended for that. And the staff that you work with and your principals, they're to be commended because they're behind you and they're the ones who give you guidance. So keep up the good work. Also, as Mrs. Suthausky just said, go girl power. I just thought for a minute there, all the high schools are now principals are females, along with youth females. So it's gonna be a good year for the school system at the high school level. Secondly, I attended the Teacher of the Year program for Mrs. Matthews and along with Mrs. Suthausky. And that was very interesting to see. And to think that she was the only teacher representing the Eastern Shore, that's a plus factor within itself. And that she's going to be representing the Eastern Shore in a number of different ways throughout the year. So Julie, you should be really proud of your mother. And the third thing, I'm on the board for the Community Foundation at Eastern Shore. And I had a meeting last week. And we have fifteen of our schools who have applied for mini-grants to the Community Foundation. And I'm here to tell you that each one of those mini-grants are gonna be rewarded. And so that just says a lot for the teachers and the administration at the schools who go after the mini-grants, and they're five thousand dollars or less, to do things for their students, to enhance things that are going on in the classroom, things that they wanna do outside of the box, things that their regular current budget doesn't allow. So these teachers and administration, again, are really working hard to make every day an enjoyable, rewarding one for our students. And for you who are here representing the administration and the superintendent's cabinet, thank you for all that you do. And also, out there to the parents, thank you for your support of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Laird Lewis?
Good afternoon. I, as you know, I write the entire time I'm up here, so I have lots of, you know, things written down and, you know, notes and comments from our public speakers. But I do wanna first start off by wishing all the students good luck tomorrow for those who are taking the PSAT. I know that my child will be one of those who is going to be taking that tomorrow. So I wanna wish all of them good luck and success with that. A huge thank you, because I know that we had talked about this before, but the board definitely wanted the superintendent's open door to come back. And Dr. Stauffer agreed that it was something that he wanted to do as well. So I was very excited to see that on our calendar of events. So thank you very much. Some of the things that everyone's talking about deals with, you know, elections and those that are moving on. So I do wanna say thank you for those who have supported me during this time. But for those that are coming on, I do wanna make sure that you are going to be adamant about making sure that our students have what they need. I just don't mean physical materials, I mean things like mental health services. Special ed students are receiving the care that they need regardless of whatever the state or situation that they're currently in. I wanna make sure that the people who are running are pushing to get our teachers to the sixty thousand. You know, the board worked extremely hard, Dr. Pavick, the administrative team, has worked extremely hard on making sure that we are getting our county to be to the best level that it can be. And I personally want to, you know, make sure from here on that those things are still occurring. I did have a wonderful meeting as well with Dr. Stauffer. We talked about many different things, things that we'd like to see to continue, some things that we tried that didn't work and it was time to get rid of them. And that we know that change is scary, but it has to happen. If change doesn't occur, then people become stagnant. And that's not what we want for our students or our teachers here in Wycomico County. It is, again, always a joy to have the student reports. I look forward to those, just as Mr. Brown does. And it was wonderful to sit and have lunch with the young ladies today. And I wanted to, also, many of you know that I comment often that I am a book reader. So I will say that I am still working on trying to finish that summer reading challenge I was doing with some of my friends and other teachers. So I'm still working on those and I will let you know that there are some wonderful books that are on the New York Times Bestseller List. So if you're looking for something to read, you can check one of those out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I want everybody to know that being a board member is a fantastic position. Just so much that you can do and so much that you try to do. Now, at times, it looks like we're all together, we're all in the same direction. Don't believe it, behind closed doors, we have our differences of opinion. And we go at it, but we all have one thing in common. We try. Toni knows what I'm talking about.
It's because I was arguing with him earlier.
Yeah, yeah, we were. When I try to push issues. We all try to do the best for the students. We don't succeed in everything that we do, but I can guarantee you that we do try. And I tend to be outspoken on a lot of issues. We kinda went over one earlier, Mr. Stauffer, and they were talking about Blueprint. I encourage all parents not to ignore what they see on the board up there. I encourage you to take that document and read through it and understand it. And the reason why I say that is, I'm normally an optimistic person, but sometimes you get kicked in the backside so many times, you can lose that optimism. I've seen these boards many times before. Twenty years ago, I was sitting on Thornton, listened to all the promises and everything that were made. And then I see where we're at today, throwing billions and billions of dollars into these programs. But yet, compare our stats now and compare where they were twenty years ago. Where's all the billions go? Gone, and why aren't we above where we're at? So, and I'm saying that to try to get you interested. I want parents to get interested and look into these programs and get hooked up with these groups that are meeting to discuss it because they involve your kids and it involves the future of the kids in our county. So please do that. One of the greatest things that we do here is, like we did today, we had lunch with these four young ladies, all leaders, because they are presidents of the council in their schools. I don't know what they do with the guys. There's no guys running. So they must be tough. So that is the fun part of it and you learn a lot from them. Julie, I didn't know you could split your, or say what you want your major to be and make it up as you go along. I found that fascinating. So it's amazing, but talking to these young students, that's the best part of the whole job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray?
Good afternoon. I have been making notes prior to this meeting and my farewell coming up. But I, and being the last one to speak, it sounds a little repetitive. However, it's been talked about by three of my previous board members here. The best part is meeting and having our SGA representatives. And today was special because the students are what it's all about. And none of us in this room, whether you are a parent or not, would be here if it were not for these students. And I really do believe, like Mr. Palmer said, that all of us, we do not agree. We do not agree, believe me. But we come to a decision that we all hope is the best for these students. And I heard it today in public comment, which really pleased me, all students. And I've been an active act of all my life in my background as a teacher and a principal. So I really enjoyed having you all, as we do each month, but today was very special. So thank you. Also, I wanted to thank Dr. Briggs for your updates on the Blueprint. And I will be listening to them whether I'm here or not. But I think it's wonderful to hear how our enrollment has come back up from the epidemic. And if I wrote down fifteen thousand thirteen as our total as of today in students in our county here. I also wanna talk about the ELL students and our special ed, which makes up ten percent of the total. Very important, extremely important. And as Mr. Palmer just said, I encourage parents to read up and educate yourself about it and certainly ask questions. Call the board and direct your questions to the people or they will help you find the person you need to talk to. Another thing is important to me is the extra mile award winners. And today, if you think back, where we had a bus driver, we had a teacher, and we had a custodian here. That's called teamwork. And if it was not for the teamwork, how would all of this come together for our students? It's important. That is an important and recognition I hope always will continue. And finally, I am very encouraged by all of the annual school projects going on. And it's a lot of work, well detailed, and it does come to the board. And it's time, it's a long time overdue. I attended Beaver Run School and Elementary School. And I remember what it was like. And I remember touring it prior to it being redone and it had not changed one bit. And I did say finally, but also most importantly, another final, is the public comments. I think it's important. And I'm sure all the other board members or myself are open-eared about it. I think it's important that people come and share. And as I heard one of our public comments, listening to the parents, absolutely. And I totally agree with that. When I was principal and we had our IEP meetings, I told every parent that you have fifty-one percent of the vote in that annual IEP. And it is important. So I hope some of these things people will learn about. I'm not gonna speak about the elections coming up. It's up to the community and the public. But I would ask you to do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So since the last meeting, I attended the chamber meeting, the United Way Kickoff Breakfast at Salisbury University, is always a big event. A lot of my colleagues in the administration were there. An after-hours event at Pickraw Stern Accounting Firm. For the first time in a number of years, I attended the Jay Miller Tawes Clambake in Chrisfield. Much nicer in October than it used to be in July when you stood on that pavement, it was a hundred and fifty degrees coming off of there. Very nice event. This past weekend, I attended a crab feast at the West Side Fire Hall in memory of Jack Morris. He was a student at Mardella High School when my oldest son and I coached soccer there from two thousand and ten to thirteen. He played soccer for us. He was a very vivacious young man, a great personality, and was tragically lost his life in a car accident a few years ago. But his family, and particularly his mom and dad, Eddie and Ann Morris, do this crab feast every year, was completely sold out, which is very heartwarming and it's a memorial fund in Jack's name. So my wife and I, just a short story, and another couple decided to go. Again, this year, my wife said, let's get there early so we can get a seat at the table because you're gonna pick crabs. We got there at four oh three and could barely find seats or a parking lot. It started at four. So it's just a tremendous event, so I just wanna shout out to that. I mean, he was a former public school student. As you know, I referee high school soccer. I did ten games since the last board meeting. Couple of those were at Mardella. And I was telling these folks, I was at Mardella last night watching the, I was telling her, at Daphne at lunch and Nia, who probably had to leave to go to soccer practice in Mardella. The action was on the other end of the field, so I'm down here. So all of us, I see the crane over Mardella High School. Got a gigantic steel beam that's coming in for a landing on the school, way away from us. But I'm watching that and all of a sudden, I hear somebody say, was he offsides? Was he offsides? I wasn't even paying attention to the game, I was watching this steel beam. Fortunately, I blew my whistle, I said, yeah, it offsides. And I got lucky, I had a fifty-fifty chance, so I was right. But literally, it's an unbelievable, Mr. Palmer's big into watching construction. I was just mesmerized, but some of the other people were as well, so anyway. So, back by popular demand, I have a quote, and it really sums up what folks were saying today, from Albert Einstein, "Anyone who's never made a mistake has never tried anything new." This seven-member board, the administration, the new administration, we made mistakes, but we tried things new. Some worked, some didn't, we fixed mistakes as best we could. But as Mr. Palmer said, we always had the best interest of the students at heart. And it was an honor to serve with the six others and with Dr. Handlin and now Dr. Stauffer. Whoever's elected in November needs to continue to think about letting the administration try new things. We need to do new things for our students in the best interest of our students and public schools. And then finally, on a personal note, I have my pink shirt on, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the month of October. I wore this shirt in particular, my younger sister is an eight-year breast cancer survivor. Next month, she's started her education career teaching at Pittsville Middle School in this county, moved to Frederick County and retired last year. But I doubt she's watching, but if she is, or she watches the replay, once in a while she watches it and critiques me. Way to go, little sister. Kudos to you and congrats on eight years being cancer-free. So with that, no other business before the board. We're adjourned and thank you for coming.